I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen? Can we do roll call, please?
Phillips?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Okay. This is time set to make nominations for the office of Mayor for a new two-year term pursuant to the city charter.
Your Honor, I nominate Shane McCambell.
Second. Any other nominations? And did you seconded that?
Yes, I did.
Are there any other nominations going once? Are there any other nominations the second time? Any other nominations for the third time? Okay. Since there are no other nominations, can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion that the nominations for Mayor be closed.
I get a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Were there any?
We're gonna vote on that motion.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Were there any statements that needed to be made by any council members?
Well, I'll just say this. I mean, it's obvious that it's unanimous, I would say, just because of the nominations. You've done a great job as Mayor. You've set a standard that people are gonna have to work to achieve from this way forward. So, very proud of the effort that you've given as Mayor for our city.
I'd like to second that. I think you've done a great job of really raising the bar in our community as to what the Mayor does. Traditionally, the Mayor has just been somebody who helps lead these meetings and is the figurehead for our community, but you've gone above and beyond that. You're out in the community all the time. You go to any event around here where there are different things going on, whether it's for charity, or for the city, or representation for the Chamber, or the Police Department, or any other municipality, or thing going on with the municipality. Shane's always there. He's a great voice. I say he's the number-one cheerleader for our town, and that's why I think it's probably best that you fill those shoes.
All right. That's enough nice stuff about me, or I'll get sick. So, we're just going to shut that down. But I do appreciate that people recognize my attempt to try to do a decent job, so... And if you guys want me to continue this out for my last two years, I'm honored to do so. So, at this time, Kathleen, since there's no other nominations, can we just?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve the Mayor for a two-year term.
I get a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay.
Congrats.
Thank you. Let's see, don't you start now.
It's warranted.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Shane A. McCambell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The Office of Mayor.
The Office of Mayor.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
And now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been so great working with you guys. Why they all nominate? They've never worked with me, so... Okay. We've got one more spot that we need to fill, and this is time set to make nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem for a new two-year term pursuant to the city charter. Do I have any nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
Your Honor, I have a nomination, Annette Wilson, for Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion for John.
Okay. Who seconded?
I did.
Okay.
I'll second John.
Okay. I'm so used to, I almost wrote in your name as Jim Davidson.
That works.
Your Honor, I'd also like to nominate Matt Rinker for Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Okay, wait a minute.
I can only nominate one?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay. And John Phillips, you were seconded by?
Matt.
You can second as many as you want, but you can only nominate one.
Right on. So, okay, we have two nominations. Do we have another nomination for Mayor Pro Tem? Asking twice, do we have another?
Can you nominate yourself?
Yes.
Okay, I'll like to nominate myself.
Okay.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations going once? Any other nominations second time?
Your Honor.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a motion, the nominations for Mayor Pro Tem be closed.
Second.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Statements can be made by council members at this time in support of their candidates, and also those interested can make statements, so...
In support of John, I think he'd make a great Mayor Pro Tem. I think, I kinda, even though we ran together and campaigned, or at the forums together, I kinda see him as a mentor. He's kinda, always kind of led the way for me, always been really receptive to answer questions. I see him as a leader, and I think he'd do a great job for Burlington.
Thank you. Well, I would say the reason, there is a reason why I wanted to nominate more than one. I think any of the people in the sitting at this table could fill the job. That's why I had nominated Annie, and tried to nominate Matt, and I would've nominated Linda if she would've let me. So, however this breaks down, I think we're gonna be well-led, so...
I'd say the same thing. If you look at the table, I'm excited about the new council, so, for myself, I mean, I've done a lot of the stuff, been a part of a lot of the stuff that's been taking place. I'm up to speed. So, someday I'd like to be able to sit in your chair, Shane, so I think being Mayor Pro Tem would give me a lot of opportunity to kinda get my feet wet with that, moving forward after your term's up, so...
No other comments?
And in support of Annie, I have been out in the community, various organizations, and she's always been there on the forefront. She's always keeping us abreast of what's going on in Burlington, and I think she's put in the homework, so I think likewise she'd be a great candidate, too. We have our work set up for her. Too many good candidates.
Too many good candidates, but there can only be one.
Nice.
Again, before we close down comments, does anybody wanna make any comments for themselves on?
Just, you know, looking forward to hopefully being Mayor Pro Tem, but obviously, I think we're all gonna work very well together, you know, have good, open dialogue, and so I think no matter what happens, we all have the ability to have that, so...
Yeah, I would say that one of our, one of our former councilmen nailed it on his way out the door, and that was Jim Davidson, when he said, "Success can be achieved when people don't care who gets the recognition." And I do think that that is going to be our goal as a council, and so I'm okay with any one of the nominees getting Mayor Pro Tem. I know it'll be well-led, so that's what I'll land on.
Other comments or statements? All right. Kathleen?
Okay. I'm gonna pass out ballots. Put your name and who you're voting, put your name on top, and then check mark who you're voting for.
Super-secret ballot.
It's not secret, 'cause I'll be reading.
I know. There's writing candidate on here.
Oh, you could write so much.
Jim Davidson, we'll draft him back.
So bad.
Are you waiting on me?
Yes. Should I play the music for you?
We do need some music, though.
Okay. Shane McCambell, Annie Wilson, Matt Rinker, Rinker, Annie Wilson, Wilson, John Phillips, Phillips, and Linda Murray, Phillips. So, we'll have to go to round two.
Okay. Can we do comments in between round two, or?
I believe so.
Now's the, now's the time to, you know, to really, if you're, if you're interested to really say what's... Because I just can't stress this enough. Sitting, I had somebody say, "Well, Shane, you do real good as Mayor because you go around to the community." Well, it's a whole lot more than that. There's a lot of stuff that just, it's not just going around the community, and the same thing with the Mayor Pro Tem. Anybody wanna make any other comments before we move forward?
Well, I mean, I don't want it to sound like I wouldn't appreciate being the Mayor Pro Tem. I would. I would, you know, I would relish the opportunity to be part of leading our city. By the same token, sitting on the council, I think we can do that just as well. You know, and I voted for myself in my stead, because everywhere I've gone, I've seen you, and that's what I'm trying to mimic. I'm trying to make sure that, that I'm out in the community and doing those things that City Council and leaders should do when they have time to do so. And so, in that regard, if I was selected, I would promise that that effort will not slack off, so...
Yeah, I can tell you, it's, it can be pretty difficult to spread your time from, you know, home life and your daytime occupation, and then also then the city. And to me, the city is, you know, it's a huge responsibility as far as, you know, whether it's a fun event, or whether it's, you know, a sad event. And I know I've unfortunately had to go to sad events on behalf of the city, and so I know it's not always fun and games, and there's a lot of tough decisions you have to make, and I, I just think that, you know, I would be good at doing that as well. I don't know. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Ready for second round?
I'm out, right?
Were you gonna make a statement? No. No, no.
Oh, yes. Two. Let me just review real quick, sorry.
That would be just?
The two that tied.
Yeah.
I think I read that right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Up to six times, to the fifth time.
Thank you. Careful what you wish for, right? Waiting on me still? It's a wrestler, ma'am. I didn't know I was gonna struggle that much with it.
Shane McCambell voted for Wilson. Rinker voted for Phillips. Linda Murray voted for Wilson. Annie Wilson voted for Wilson, and Phillips voted for Phillips.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, so can I get a... Is that you, Linda?
Yeah.
I'm tardy. Your Honor, I have a motion to approve the Mayor Pro Term for a two-year term.
If I get a second?
You want, you want to say your name?
Annie Wilson.
I'm sorry. I think there's a motion in your package. It should have her name.
Yeah, it's a...
Put her name in there.
The blue sheet.
Just read, no, on the other side. Where's here?
Out of order already.
Oh, never out of order.
Get the blue sheet.
Okay, you didn't get, you didn't get one on there, so... There you go. Just motion that the...
I motion that the election of Annie Wilson as the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Burlington, Iowa for a two-year term be hereby approved.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote it.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. So, can I get a... Is that you, Linda?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm tardy. Your Honor, I have a motion to approve the Mayor Pro Term for a two-year term.
If I get a second?
You want, you want to say your name?
Annie Wilson.
I'm sorry. I think there's a motion in your package. It should have her name.
Yeah, it's a...
Put her name in there.
The blue sheet.
Just read, no, on the other side. Where's here?
Out of order already.
Oh, never out of order.
Get the blue sheet.
Okay, you didn't get, you didn't get one on there, so... There you go. Just motion that the...
I motion that the election of Annie Wilson as the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Burlington, Iowa for a two-year term be hereby approved.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote it.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Swear now.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
Aye, Antoinette Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The Office of Mayor Pro Tem.
The Office of Mayor Pro Tem.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Linda? We're gonna move, we're gonna leave you, honey.
Oh?
Yeah, we're gonna leave you right here for tonight, but we're gonna, we'll be, but we'll find, we'll find a nice home for you. You don't have to shake my hand, it's her. She's the, she's the one.
Thought I got loose, 'cause I messed up.
No, no, you didn't mess up. You're standing right there. All right, listen.
You won. One screw.
We're gonna move downhill tonight, now that we've got the, now that we've got this squared away. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, consent agenda having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have five resolutions. The first is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2017 Depot Storm Sewer improvements. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2017 Jefferson Street parking improvements. The third is a resolution reappointing city officers of the City of Burlington, city clerk, and city treasurer. The fourth is a resolution approving agreement with the Quad City Helicopter Emergency Medical Service doing business as Med Force for Critical Care Ground Transportation Services. And number five is a resolution approving a federal aid agreement for a surface transportation program project between Iowa Department of Transportation and the City of Burlington. And we also have some public hearings set for January 15th. The first is a consideration of sale of property, locally known as 848 South Garfield Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The second is a consideration of sale of property, locally known as 424 North Third Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. And then the third is consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Law Enforcement Center site work improvements. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? Yes. I see none? All right. Thank you, Leon. Counsel?
None. I motion to approve all items listed under Item 1, consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Kathleen, can we vote?
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. This is time for consideration of plans and specs for the, for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge Project. Mr. Tis, okay, Mr. Mac.
It would be kicking it over. I just came up here to introduce, we have Larry Sandershaw's here with Stanley Consultants, who is the engineer who worked on the design of the project, so he'll be able to take over the rest of it.
Good evening. Got a handout here, and it should be on the, it should also be on the overhead. I'm Larry Sandershaw. I'm a structural engineer with Stanley. I work out of the Muscatine office, and I came before you counsel about a year ago when you hired Stanley to do a design to replace the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. And I figured I would, I was asked by city staff to give you a little background on the project and tell you how it's advanced to the present day. So, the, the, the bridge is estimated for to be around four and a half million construction. That budget was set several years ago, and we've tried to give you a very pragmatic and practical bridge that would meet the construction budget. The, it's, this involves approximately $4 million in local money, or local money, and another $1 million in state money, that, that construction cost plus the design cost. The, we're on a Iowa DOT letting for around April of 2018, and the construction is anticipated to take about a year, and be finished sometime in late spring or early summer 2019. So, next page, please. The existing bridge was built in the early 1940s as the old US Highway. It will be closed for construction, and it will be demolished. It's a, it's got, it's, the bridges are rated on a scale of zero to 100, and I, if it's brand-new on Dedication Day, it's 100, and if it's not exist, if it doesn't exist anymore, it's a zero. So, this bridge is less than 10, and it's currently low-rated. Normal truck rating is 80,000 pounds, and this, 40 tons, and this bridge is rated for 22 tons. So, it's ma, it's primarily residential traffic. There's around 4,400, 4,500 cars per day. Relatively small percentage of truck traffic. Most of the truck traffic goes on the state highway. So, there, there, that picture in the upper right-hand corner is of a, of a residential style floor jack. It's holding up one of the corners of the, of the bridge. There's four corners of the bridge that are, have got some deterioration due to, basically, it's, it's, it's waters coming through the bridge joints. It's, it's got a lot of severe rust. The deck is full of salt. So, that's, that's, that's why, that's, the bridge has also got a lot of lead paint on it, and that would significantly, that's, that's a significant factor in the cost of demolition and replacement of the bridge.
Is there... Go ahead.
Okay. The new, new bridge is a, the existing bridge is a four-span steel bridge, and the new bridge will be a four-span, 500-foot-long precast concrete bridge. Next slide, please. The bridge will be closed during construction. Alternate routes are on local streets, including Lucas Avenue, and for truck traffic along US 34. Next slide, please. The project requires coordination with BNSF Railroad, and we've been working closely with city staff since that opening day. We, there's around 40 trains a day that come through there, BNSF Freight plus Amtrak. The, the new bridge has a 10-foot-tall fence over the tracks and piers that are outside of railroad property, so we're, the design was completed to avoid disruption of railroad operations. Next slide, please. The, the new bridge will have two 12-foot traffic lanes in the middle. It'll have two 5-foot bicycle lanes on the outside, and one 5-foot sidewalk on the south side. The purpose of this, we, we've actually narrowed down, narrowed the bridge, okay? The, the existing bridge has four 10-and-a-half-foot lanes and two 5-foot sidewalks, and the, that was designed when it was, when lanes were narrower, and there was more traffic on the bridge before the new state highway. So, it's primarily residential, so you've got, as part of a, kind of a complete streets or project, there's an accommodation for the bicycle lanes on the outside, and an accommodation for pedestrian traffic along the south side. Next slide, please. The, the, one of the design features is that we would like to not put any water on the railroad or on the city streets below, so we're piping water into storm sewers and Hawkeye, the Hawkeye sewer there, and we're dropping water down the piers and trying to keep the water off of city property, off of Osborne Street below, and, and to keep it off the railroad. So, next slide, please. The new bridge is gonna have a, a chain-link fence that's vinyl-coated over the railroad. There's also gonna be, on the next slide, a vertical picket-style fence. The, over the, it's a requirement for safety over the railroad that the chain-link fence, two-inch square mesh, be 10-foot tall. It's to prevent things from being thrown onto the tracks. Next slide, please. And on the rest of the span, it's going to be a 5-foot-tall vertical picket fence. That was, we, we received from guidance from council during a previous meeting that you wanted to add some aesthetic elements to the bridge. So, anyway, that's kind of an overview of, of the project. I'll take any questions you folks may have at this time.
Let me start with the audience. Are there any questions in the audience? Yeah, Mr. Shane?
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. What's the cost-sharing on this, again, between the state, feds, and local?
It was a... Million dollars through the DOT. That would be federal funds. The rest is us.
And you won't have to bond for that?
Yes, we'll bond. We'll be paying for that with Tiff Financing.
Well... Another question on that. What's the difference between using precast concrete and steel as far as longevity?
The, precast is, we, we did a study. I mean, the, the steel, precast is of the kind that's used on the state highway on US 34. I think that there's similar longevity, but steel has, steel costs more. The precast is made here in Iowa. The main advantage of this modern bridge is that it doesn't have any joints on it. The existing bridge on the downhill side, on the east side, if you notice, if you drive onto Osborne Street, there's a lot of water coming down the joint from above, and it's carrying sand and sediment out from underneath the slope wall and the stairs. So, a jointless bridge would be common to both steel and concrete, but the concrete bridge is the less expensive of the two.
I just noticing on Highway 34, there seems to be some spalling of the concrete. That's a problem and a hazard to, well, anybody that's under the bridge or on Osborne Street.
That, the, the US highways put through in the 80s? Is that correct? carrying sand and sediment out from underneath the slope wall and the stairs. So, a jointless bridge would be common to both steel and concrete, but the concrete bridge is the less expensive of the two.
I just noticing on Highway 34, there seems to be some spalling of the concrete. That's a problem and a hazard to, well, anybody that's under the bridge or on Osborne Street.
That, the, the US highways put through in the 80s? Is that correct?
Seventies, I think.
Seventies.
Yeah, mid-seventies.
Okay. So, that's getting on 30, 35 years now? So, it probably have been some deck repla, one thing that has changed in bridge design since that time period is they use epoxy-coated reinforcing in the bridge deck.
Okay.
And that was a real, they started doing that in the 80s, late 80s, early 90s. They went to jointless bridges, which eliminated the water problem at the end of the bridge, and they went to epoxy-coated reinforcing in the deck. And that is, the epoxy-coated reinforcing in the deck is the main reason that you see the spalling from the underside of the deck. And that has, that, those two things together have given bridges in Iowa an extra 20 years design life. I mean, that's why you're seeing replacement work being necessary in the bridges that were constructed in the 70s. They're getting 50, 60 years anticipated life out of modern bridges with epoxy rebar and no joint.
Thank you.
I have a question. On the, on the chain-link versus the iron picket, whatever we want to call that, is there, is there a huge cost difference there? As far as which is cheaper, is a chain-link 10-foot be cheaper versus a picket? Because although aesthetically it may be pleasing, I'm looking at the diagram and I'm thinking as a kid that once got into trouble a lot as a youth, that's not going to deter me from trying to hit a train with a snowball, to be honest with you.
The chain-link fence?
Yeah, the chain-link fence.
The chain-link fence is the, it's a, it's a railroad requirement?
I know, so what my question is, is it cheaper to do the chain-link fence all the way across versus the picket?
Uh, yes, it would be, but we got some guidance from council and from city staff that there was kind of a desire. I think, I think the, I think the mayor said Burlington is better than chain-link fence.
You got a good memory, my friend. I'm going to get you in trouble, man.
What's the price difference? The price, the price difference on, it's, it's probably $50,000. Rough order of magnitude. So, we take that number into consideration when you're going to switch it out, it's not as significant. Yeah, the, the chain-link fence would be, the premium chain-link fence would be vinyl-coated. I designed the, the vertical picket railing to be powder-coated.
Okay.
And kind of easily maintained in like eight-foot sections so that, you know, potentially if it gets hit or damaged or vandalized, you can lift out pieces and replace it.
Okay.
So, my question is, are there any other cheaper designs that we should be looking at in order to be able to reduce our costs? Or is this about as good as it's going to get, given the size of it and?
We're at 100%, well, 95% design here. So, to, to be able to read, you're saying the bridge, or you're talking the fence?
The bridge.
The bridge. I would say we're past that point for trying to do that. We've already headed down that path, having them hired last year. So, I would not recommend verging off into some of the redesign conversation.
I think I could speak to the general, the, the most cost-effective way to meet the budget is to build the, like, the least bridge that you need. In other words, you've got, the existing bridge is four lanes plus two five-foot sidewalks, so it's about 57 feet wide. The new bridge is about 43 feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
And we went to bat for the city, and city staff supported the effort to put the sidewalk on the one side. We looked at it as a safety effort to try and promote the pedestrian traffic on the side that had the most pedestrian traffic towards the south side. And we also, to be fairly honest with you, looked at it as a cost-management technique. In other words, the difference between a 43-foot-wide bridge and a 57-foot-wide bridge is quite a bit of money.
Mm-hmm.
And that was, and that was also played a part in deciding the, to use the concrete pre-stressed as opposed to steel.
On the, on the chain-link fence, John, we had, we saw pictures of that, that they, that they showed us of other communities that had used that, and it looked like, it looked like a prison.
Yeah.
You know, when they had it going, you know, and that, that's kind of why we step back away from that, go with that full-on look, just, just.
Yeah, and I see that, and I know that's a regulation by BNSF. My, my only question was, how much cost difference was it? But when you take it out over the period of years, I guess I'm okay with it, I just don't know really what kind of deterrent it is.
What we did, what we did to kind of make the, the, we, the, BNSF requires the chain-link fence with the two-inch mesh over their property. And we went over the entire span, too. So, their, their right-of-way is like 70 feet wide, and the entire span, too, is like 135 feet. Thought it looked a little bit better to put it over the entire span rather than just part of the bridge, part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming, Larry.
I guess the only other thing I'd mention, as we went through the design process, there were several different options that were looked at for, how, how could you look to shorten the length of the bridge by changing the two ends? Would it be, could it be done in a way that was cost-effective or not? You looked at different options for types of materials within the bridge itself from a cost, cost perspective. And the option that got presented to you was the one that came across as the most efficient use of funds.
It's a very, it's a very conventional bridge, and I guess that's the best, that was my guidance from city staff and from council, is we'd like to have a cost-effective way to get across railroad and Osborne Street.
Right on, right on. You got that right.
On a budget that was set sometime ago.
Okay.
I motion to close.
Second, second. Thank you, sir. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge project.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Let's vote, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, we've got an ordinance left.
Your Honor, I have in front of you the final adoption of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the West Avenue-Mason Road urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Iowa, Code of Iowa.
Second.
Mr. Tisland.
No changes from the previous two readings. This, again, is setting up a TIF district for the use of TIF funds in this Outlot 3 of Squisher subdivision, the planned Park West subdivision. This is part of the urban renewal area plan that was previously approved by the city council for the larger area. This was one lot within that larger area and would be the only lot currently being approved for TIF funds for the development proposed by Mr. Cahill. Again, this is the second step in the process, final step is a development agreement. That would have to have a set date for hearing and a consideration by council for approval as well.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? You were jumpy, you were froggy, yeah.
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I, I think the best way to handle my objection to this involves Matt Rinker, actually.
Oh, boy.
You sell life home and car insurance.
I do.
And I assume you either own or rent the building that you have there on South Main Street.
That's correct.
I have an invoice from Connection Insurance. They're building a new facility in what I refer to as Randy Land Mall, what you refer to as Manor Mall. With all the money that the city has spent and potential abatements, your competitor is going to be getting $2 million to compete with you. You should find that galling, and I find it galling, that I'm subsidizing new houses for doctors and whoever on our wages. And actually, it's not wages anymore, my wife's drawing social security, we get about $1,200 a month. I find that galling, too. The whole idea of favoring one property over another, you all, when you're sworn in, say you're going to uphold the Constitution. Fourteenth Amendment is equal treatment. It's not equal treatment to untax new construction and force the cost of maintaining city services on residential property owners like me who've owned our houses for decades.
Thank you, Mr. Shayhan. Yes, sir.
Dan Cahill, 1414 Hillary Burlington. I thought I might, if possible, Mayor, just give a few comments about this because, you know, this has been going on for some time, and I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, especially the comments of Leon, he's been here at every meeting, and says that this property is going to, this, this project is going to increase his property taxes. Well, the truth is, Leon, this has no way that this can increase your property taxes, no way. This is a $500,000 gamble my wife and I and family are going to do, hopefully to benefit the city of Burlington a great deal. Anybody that buys a lot and builds a house in this subdivision will pay the cost of improvements. There's no way that anybody else in the city can pay any of this cost of improvement. So, I just, if, I, I've tried to give everybody a heads-up as we rolled along on this thing, and I provided everybody with a 10 or a 12-point summary. I'll just mention some of those things again because we do have some new council people. And, of course, people watch this on television, and they get a lot of information from your meetings. And that's why I would like to just repeat it very quickly, Mayor, you can gavel me down whenever you want to.
Okay.
I know you're in a hurry to get to your election night party. Okay.
Don't start.
This project, this project is 16 lots. Eric has the, has the plan. It's going to provide for 16 new building lots, some of which may be condo lots, so you may have a condominium on some of them, so you might have 20 particular, 20 properties. The total cost of this project is $500,000. That's somewhat of a gamble in this day and age, because I can tell you Burlington's real estate market right now is very, very soft. Very soft, a lot of great deals out there if you're going to buy some houses. This project, there's the, there it is, complies with the 1999 City Development Plan, which was a surprise to me. I wanted to run a street in there and put a cul-de-sac. And I was encouraged by Eric and his staff to not do a cul-de-sac, but let's plan for roadway that will run all the way through this land, and maybe Eric could pull up the larger plot there. And it's just a perfect place for another street. And that's what the, that's what the Burlington proposed planning people that in 1999 said, that street should go from West Avenue to Mason Road. And it is now possible. It's never been possible. This land has been in a trust since 1947, and that's why you have houses on this side of it, you have houses on that side of it. It's very rare to have a 20-acre-plus parcel right in the middle of the city. Very, I mean, this is incredible that the city has this and has this opportunity, to be very frank. I look, I look for building projects all the time. I drive around town on the weekends looking for places you should could build a couple of houses. But to find 20 or 25 acres altogether in the right spot is amazing. Eric convinced me of that. And this, a street, a street straight through is, it's somewhat more expensive than the cul-de-sac that I had on my early plans. But you can see on the left how that can tie into Dill Street. This, this particular plan can tie into Dill Street. And up above, going right, you eventually will tie into Gilbert Street. And a little lower on the plan, there's a little jagged street that goes into Sunrise West. They really need an exit street over there, they got one street in, one street out. And, and most of the people use the church property to get in and out of there, and the church has all those signs up, says private property and all that. But, but in any event, back to my 12, my 12 points. This street that I will be putting in is about 850 feet, it'll help solve the current traffic overload on Willow. See, people get from the new, the new school, Stone Middle School, they go off to the left there, you'll see Willow, Willow goes over to West Avenue. Well, go out there at 3:30 some afternoon, and you'll see what I mean about a traffic jam. You can hardly get across West Avenue. Now, the total cost of this project is 500,000, it's 150,000 roughly to buy the land, a little more than that probably, but 350,000 for the street sewer water engineering, underground electric. So, it's a $500,000 project. And this is a substantial real estate boon for the city of Burlington. The city, right now, receives $129.46 per year, now that's per year, on this property. When it's completed, city county assessor Matt Warren estimates that the city will receive $46,574 in taxes. That, that's 39.4% of the estimated taxes that this will produce, which is 118,000 a year. City gets 39% of that. I mean, that's, that's, that's quite a deal for the city. Okay, number seven, I, I mentioned that, oh. We're, we're asking if this property be established as a workforce housing project also, which is really important. What does that mean? Well, the state of Iowa has a great plan to try to get builders to build houses that working people can afford, not 300,000, 400, 500, 600,000-dollar houses, you see ads for those all the time. Actually, I've got prices on all the lots for sale in Des Moines County. There's lots that they want 100,000 for. I intend to sell these lots for 35,000, if, 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 if possible. Now, jobs, it costs a lot of money to build 20 dwellings. There's a lot of jobs there. Not just a lot of taxes to the city, but 16 homes, estimated 175,000 cost, with two, that's $2,800,000 just in materials and building expenses. But this, but this workforce housing idea that the state has isn't, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything for me. It's, it's tax benefits to the contractors. Now, there's other benefits to me, Mayor, but if a builder now in Iowa, now this isn't a Burlington law or any, this is a state law, they can, if they'll agree to build four houses in three years, they can get 10% back on all of the material that they put into those houses, 10%. Well, that's quite a bit of money. In addition, they get 6%, they get their sales taxes back. Now, that goes to the builder, that doesn't go to Dan Cahill. Or my, my son Bradley, that's why I got Bradley there, I should have introduced him earlier as Brad.
Brett also with him.
And my, and my daughter-in-law to be Leah there. Anyway, that, that's something that goes to the builders. I don't intend to build houses there necessarily, I may have to do one or two to get it started. And, and I'm happy to do that as soon as the weather breaks. Okay. My corporation, Park West LLC, shoulders all of the financial burdens of this project, every penny. Leon doesn't put in a cent. I put in $500,000 to make this thing go. And I get some benefits out of it. And, but no, no other current taxpayer in the city of Burlington will pay higher taxes because of this development, it just isn't possible under Iowa law. But I've heard that in the last three meetings I've been to. Residential development in.
I don't want to rush you, Dan, you know I love you, man.
I'm about finished.
Okay.
Residential development in Burlington is very important. I mean, even though the housing market is weak, as the Chamber of Commerce says, and I've sent, I've looked at everybody, or copy their statement, that we need more inexpensive-type houses. Now, we have more subdivision lots available for sale in the county and the small towns around here than we have in Burlington. Not right, that's not right. Burlington is a wonderful city, and it provides a lot of things for people to do and see, but it just is easy to go out and build it in Danville or West Burlington, and I just think that's a shame, and I think that's, that's something that should be noted, that Burlington should have the housing, Burlington should be getting the taxes. And, let's see, oh, one of the other things, you know, everybody's down on TIF, they say TIF, oh, nasty, nasty, bad word and all that. But this is the eighth subdivision that I've done in Burlington. I find it that, I, I really think, I'm proud of that. I drive around town, I look at, oh, yeah, there's one of my subdivisions, eight. This is only the second time I've asked for a TIF development project. Some developments, you don't need TIF. Though where I live, Park South subdivision, out across from the airport, I didn't ask for a TIF there, it's 55 lots. Why? It had roads on three sides, it had sewers on three sides, it had water on three sides. And it was a very easy piece of land to develop. And, but I, you know, I, I'm really proud of this. Now, here's one of the things I'm going to hit, I'm going to hit it hard, after we get this passed, if we get it passed, military homeownership. There are not a lot of people in Burlington, and I've talked to realtors, who are unaware of this program. This is what's called Home Base Iowa. Iowa again, here comes the state again, they want to encourage veterans to live in our towns and move to Iowa. Well, there's tremendous military assistance program, $5,000 if you're a veteran towards your down payment. $5,000, that's pretty good. And then the Iowa Finance Authority's got another $2,000 to add to that if you're a veteran, serving, you know, within the last 10. if you're a veteran, serving, you know, within the last ten years or so. Men or women can apply for that, nobody does, nobody knows about the darn thing. So anyway, I'm, uh, I'm pretty high on the program, and I hope we get a yes vote, because I'd be extremely disappointed if I didn't. And I won't, if, if, except for this vote, I will not do it. I, I just, you can't, you can't afford to put in infrastructure without this type of assistance. You see, the city owns the street sewer and water. Now, that's, this is a change in history, people aren't aware of history sometimes, but Burlington is laid out in a grid system, isn't it? It's beautiful. North Third, North Fourth, North Fifth, and, and all of these streets from, from the river to Central Avenue, from North Street to South Street was how Burlington was laid out by the US government in like eighteen forty or something. Burlington's a very rare, rare town, laid out in a grid system. And in the early days, Burlington survived, they didn't, we, they didn't have TIF. What, what the city did was they wanted streets on North Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth, et cetera. The city paved them. They go get a bond, raise money, pave the streets, and pay it out of local taxes. This, this idea of developers doing the streets is a fairly recent phenomenon, I'm thinking from the forties maybe on. Burlington was never like this, and most cities in Iowa weren't. Developers never paved your streets, or sewers, or water. The streets did it, the water company put in your water line. In fact, the early subdivisions I did, the, the water company always put in the water lines.
They're partying without me, Dan, they're partying without me, man.
Anyway, uh, thank you for listening and, and welcome all the new council members. It's going to be very exciting for you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Time for comments. I, I mean, I'm simply going to say that I understand Leon's concerns. Uh, there are a lot of people in the community that share the same opinion, um, but at the end of the day, as a community, we have to start to create an environment where people can come in and invest in our community, and this is one of the tools that's available for us to be able to do that. So that's why I'm in favor of the project.
Any other comments?
One of the arguments that I've heard in the community is that, well, this is going to happen with or without our support, and you just heard Dan say, no, I can't fiscally afford this without this support, and this is the way, uh, infrastructure's kind of created now, so I think we need to, need to support this and, and, and welcome everything that he's done for our city. And, and welcome Leon. I always am glad to see you put in your civic duty and wish more people would follow suit.
Here, here.
And just real quick, I know, and I mentioned it last week, as we move forward, one of the things I'd like to see us achieve this year is to get pen to paper and put a better policy in place so that people like Mr. Cahill, when they want to invest in Burlington, they have the ability to, to read black and white in front of them what's available from an incentive standpoint, uh, instead of us essentially individually picking people who, who have the opportunity to do this and who don't. And once again, I would welcome, you know, Mr. Leon, if you want to contribute to those discussions in order to be able to have an idea how that policy will work and what's in it, then I would highly encourage.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, my only comment is, uh, this has nothing to do with Dan Cahill, somebody says, hey, do you have a beef with Dan Cahill? Absolutely not. I love Dan Cahill. I just have to go against this because, uh, it's not Dan Cahill's, uh, development that I'm looking at. I'm looking at the whole thing, and, uh, it's a philosophy thi, thing, it's a philosophy deal. I'm not saying I'm right and that you're wrong, I'm just saying philosophically, we're on two different pages moving forward, so that's where I'm at. But just for the record, I want this documented, Hawkeye. I love Dan Cahill, especially his wife, she's beautiful. Kathleen, let's take this to vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCampbell?
No.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Now, uh, this concludes the, uh, the meeting tonight. Now we'll entertain comments from the audience. If there's some of them we have not covered, we will welcome you. Yes, sir, we'll have you come first.
And I got some stuff to hand out. Call the work director, right? Correct.
And for the city council here, two and, two, three, four, five, and a single sheet just for the city clerk.
She likes to have her single sheet, it means a lot to her.
Do you want to take one of the backs up, please? Sometimes it's better just to put things in writing. Did I get enough for y'all? Oh, city manager, two. I'm Christopher Repke, I live at thirteen oh six Madison Avenue. I've been living there since April of ninety, nineteen ninety-four, so it's been a while. I'm just going to read what I have here. Dear Honorable Members of the Burlington City Council, City Manager, City Staff, Local Press, my requests and comments concern Madison Avenue paving and bike lanes. I'm asking the City Council, the next City Council meeting, withdraw the grant request for Madison Avenue, the reasons follow. A misunderstanding of information presented. In a video of the City Council meeting of December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, discussion was held concerning Madison Avenue. From watching the video, there was confusion on the options presented to the council, in my opinion. The speed and timing of the vote. When I heard on the radio and saw on the news that at a work session, there was a discussion on the Madison Avenue project, I did not realize the vote would be happening next City Council meeting, nor was that conveyed to me by a city staff member with whom I met. The speed of this vote has not allowed the property owners of Madison Avenue to be properly notified for comment and input. The effect on property value. Removing, and now as we heard, that part, that the housing market's already soft in Burlington. Removing parking from Madison Avenue according to the retired realtor who sold me my house would make my home less desirable. This means to get interest in my house, I would have to lower the price. Decreasing property values an issue in the city of Burlington, Iowa. Excuse me, let me start. Decreasing property values an issue in the city of Burlington, Iowa. And then I goofed up here. Goal-setting report dated June second, two thousand sixteen, page nine, under Budget and Finance. Other housing issues can be found on page ten, under Housing and Community Development. Removing parking from Madison Avenue will hurt home values. For the months of November, December, January, February, and March, Madison Avenue will receive no bike traffic. Safety. Even with bike lanes, the street would still be dangerous for children. They do not have the motor skill for riding among three thousand pound vehicles. It'd be safer to designate South Tenth Street as a bike route. Parking could remain on South Tenth with the speed and amount of traffic is much lower than Madison Avenue. No connection to businesses that would allow people to commute on a large scale to work. How many bikes would, day, per day would use the bike lanes? Would it be more per day than those who use Madison Avenue to park? Have any studies been done to verify the number of bike riders who use or will use Madison Avenue to bike? The difficulty it will bring to the residents of living on Madison Avenue. As an example, I've handed out with the letter Christmas card. This is a side note, they were probably ninety percent off, and I go, my, probably before I was married in ninety-six, but even after then, she goes, why did you buy them? Well, they were ninety percent off. So anyways. I ask that the Honorable City Council Members, Reverend City Staff, City Manager, Local Press, deliver the card to my front door. Please leave between my screen door and front door. If I'm home, invite you in for a cup of coffee. Please remember, you cannot use my driveway or my neighbors to park. Retentance filled with Christmas gifts. Also cannot park on Madison Avenue. Please find a place to park and consider there'll be other neighbors seeking parking in the same area and deliver the card. And consider also other-
That was nice, my friend, that was a nice move, just throwing that out.
Okay. Also consider, if you go down Madison, look across the street at the housing across from where I live, look down, look across from the gas station, there's some houses there, you, you, you'll see even more of what I'm talking about. These are a few of the arguments against removing parking from Madison Avenue. Please do not devalue and destabilize the older neighborhoods for the sake of what is perceived as newer and, and better. If you devalue the older neighborhoods, no amount of newer or better will save Burlington from a Detroit-like fate. I know that's a big statement to make, but that's what Detroit did, they forgot their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just so you know, I'm keeping this card. I'll, I'll come visit you for coffee, but I'm keeping this, you gave it to me, so. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Paul Carl, I live at thirteen oh four Madison Avenue. I agree with many of the points that Mr. Repke made there. Um, I did want to reiterate a little bit on a couple of his points. I know that in the December eighteenth meeting, it was discussed or kind of put in place to make a bicycle route on Madison Avenue as kind of an incentive to get this package to go through. Looking at, at the information that was put in place, it appears that the traffic counts are extremely heavy on Madison Avenue, so I'm wondering why we would want to put a bicycle route on an extremely heavy traffic road when there's umpteen other roads leading in the same direction that are not so busy. Currently, we have bike routes on Main Street, I believe, we have one on Summer Street, we have one on Central Avenue, and they all go down to the park as well. So I, I don't know why we would want to push a bicycle route on a heavily congested road. That just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Currently, Loisa Street, right next door to my property, is a bicycle route, and each year I see maybe twenty people that travel that route. So very few people actually use those routes, even though they are designated for such purpose. I noticed that in the application that I got a copy of, they are, they're pushing for the complete reconstruction of the road north of South Street all the way to Angular as far as new concrete and so forth, and just new asphalt from South Street out to Sunset. And so that'd just be a repaving. I was wondering if it was ever discussed or considered removing the resurfacing portion of the project to, to just pay with that, with city money so we could keep, uh, parking? And then the other portion, it's currently parking on both sides, but if we limited that to parking on one side, if that would meet the requirements that they're trying to pursue? And that way, we could continue having parking on the entire street. Other than that, I don't really have anything more than what Mr. Repke had stated, but again, I, I would just like it to be either rescinded or amended in some fashion from what it currently is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would it be okay to, to answer his question?
Uh, actually, no, Jim, you want to, you want to-
Actually, um, Nick, you could come forward and just kind of just do a review of what the project is. He had a grant application that was due by the end of-
It's already submitted to South Tower Region Plan.
It was ended, due by the end of December?
December thirty-first. It's been submitted.
No, I understand, but more specifically, he had a question just as to why we chose the bike path.
Well, he can talk about what-
The, there's several different things that were brought up. As far as reconstruction versus repaving, essentially, what we did for that and why we called that out was for the estimates. If we get into it and realize that, that we need to do more base work, I mean, that's what we'll do. Essentially, the, the reason why we called that out is to explain our cost estimate, to explain how we got to the dollar figures that we got to. As far as the bike lane goes, um, the reason why we chose this road as an opportunity for a bike lane is because of the width restrictions from south, um, to Sunset, it is only thirty foot wide, uh, due to SUDAS standards that would not meet the vertical clearance issues if you were to have three lanes, which include the two lanes of travel and the parking. Um, so it would have been our recommendation, um, moving forward under those standards to remove the parking regardless. The bike lanes, um, do not have the same vertical clearance issues, and so they are a, kind of a filler of avoided space that would have been, uh, previously occupied by the parking. And also, the bike lanes also account for, um, points in the, uh, the application process.
You also have a requirement, um, from a public works perspective, the council passed a complete streets policy a couple of years ago that encouraged any project that came up to go through a process of looking at, is this a spot where, using a complete street approach would make sense or not?
Yeah, the complete streets policy, it doesn't necessarily point out and call out specifically bike lanes, but it talks about improving the, the transportation flow of all kinds, whether that's pedestrian, bike, or automobile. And with those rest, same width restrictions, um, we would have looked at the safety concern caused by the, uh, the smaller lanes of travel. Um, I, I think Jesse had presented, um, some of the accident reports, um, on that street. There were sixty-some, a lot of those were probably garnered at the intersections, but we had six in the last five years of either head-on collision, um, side-swiping a car, or hitting any of the vertical clearance issues off of the side of the curb. So those are the types of things that we would look at as, also with complete streets as, as safety concerns.
Thank you, sir.
Question, question, oh.
Thank you. Well, actually, we can't, this isn't, yeah, just so that people know, when, when something's not on the, uh, on the agenda, we're not allowed to have, uh, just open discussions on that, that would be new information, so, uh, your, people are welcome to bring information here, uh, we encourage you to do that. And as you can see already, you, you can see who some of the players already get information, so you're welcome to stick around also, uh, after the meeting. Is there anybody here that has not yet had an opportunity to speak? Mr. Sterling?
Good evening. Freddie Starling, five seventeen South Seventh Street, Burlington, Iowa. And, uh, usually come every year, uh, it's about that time for the Dr. King, Dr. King celebration. Will be at the Burlington Memorial Auditorium on the fifteenth of, uh, January, five o'clock. I just brought a few letters, and, uh, Mayor, you mind if I present you one?
Please do.
All right, thank you.
I'm kind of dying short because I'm understanding how the date is.
Well, hopefully it's not the same place you're at, I don't like for people to be prettier than me in the same building. I heard that. I didn't hear what it was, but whatever it was, it was no good. I just want, I want to say-
I believe we have a, I believe we have a blessed speaker coming from McComb, Byron Odom. Uh, I believe we'll be blessed, inspired, uh, a lot of good information, uh, things that I pray and hope that will continue to bring us together. We'll continue to re, remember and, uh, hold fast to, uh, Dr. King's, uh, dream. Also, as, uh, there will be, uh, music, uh, there will be, uh, a light meal. We also encourage, uh, those to bring a covered dish, and we'll have a fellowship afterwards. Uh, and there also will be a free meal offering. Uh, I want to say this, the city, City Council being very supportive, uh, Human Rights Commission, and we're just very grateful. This will be our fortieth, this will be our thirtieth year, thirtieth year, so I think we, we have-
What year is this?
Thirty, this has been our thirtieth year we have been in the city of Burlington, and, uh, we asking you, Mayor, to, uh, counsel the media coming on the fifteenth. But anyway, we asking you to, to give our welcome, and of course, we have our, uh, finance, uh, always, and be a blessing to us. We also have our chief, is always a blessing to us, and we'll be hearing from all of our dignitaries, uh, possibly on that night, so we, thank you for your support.
Thank you for coming down. Happy New Year to you. And, uh, yeah, just to throw that out there, we do have, uh, um, Chief has usually always had everything, and, uh, James comes to a few things, so, uh, we're all, uh, we're all pretty happy about that. Nobody caught that. All right, it's time to go. Uh, Mr. Tisland, I'm sorry, was there anybody else, any comments? Okay. Mr. Tisland?
I didn't have anything, there's a glove found on first floor, it's anyone's glove, before the meeting.
Mr. Tin, Mr. Tisland has somebody's glove, so make sure you grab it up to the meeting. Uh, Kathleen? We're glad to have you back again.
Thank you.
Um, Antoine, uh, Mayor Protown?
Yes, thank you, just wanted to, you know, thank you for the support and, um, stay warm, everyone, it's really cold outside, it's dangerous.
It's cold.
I don't think I have anything else, though.
John Billups?
I would just like to thank the heroes of the snow removal. Uh, when I was snug in my bed, those plows are going through and, and my ro, our roads are clear, and they always do a great job, uh, you know, it, it, it just, they don't get enough credit, especially this time of year, so great job to the city staff for the snow removal and being on top of it.
What that guy said. Lynda Murray?
I don't have anything this evening, but I will sell you my peanut butter popcorn recipe for five bucks, I'm just kidding, that's a side joke.
We'll talk about that later, my friend. Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Matt Rinker, counselor?
Um, I have nothing, I just reiterate John said, I did get an email from Fortmore Councilman, uh, Tim Scott, he forwarded me something from, uh, someone in the community, basically saying that they were thrilled with the fact that the city plows did such a great job, I sent that off to Nick, I think Jimmy got the same thing, so, uh, everybody stay warm.
Amen to that.
That's it.
Jimmy?
I know that Nick will be on the radio tomorrow, uh, at nine, and-
I know that Nick will be on the radio tomorrow at nine, and he'll talk about snow removal then, about four weeks too late, but-
Yeah, I was supposed to do it in December, but then I had a flood wall meeting. So the reason why I handed these out is, every year, we, we put this out in the Hawkeye, and then we also have a copy of it on our website, explaining kind of the method to the mayhem of snow removal, talking about the emergency routes that we have. I also will be on the radio tomorrow talking about it. One thing with the cold, to be aware of, we've had some issues with some traffic signals, because it gets into that sub-zero temperature, some of the electronics don't want to work very well, so there's been some traffic lights going into faults, and they've been going on red flash, so please be, considerate, or not, that's not the right word, but-
That's not the right word, Nick.
No, it isn't. Aware, thank you.
The MLK celebration, we've, we've had people participate pretty much every year, but we always run into this, that's the same night as a council meeting, five-thirty, so people tend to attend at the before and as they can afterwards. Radio, so as you think about the beginning of the new year, new council, you're, you're all gonna have to decide who's gonna be on the radio the second Wednesday of the month at nine. So for next week, be thinking who's gonna be wanting to step forward and, and be involved with that, and as that goes on, just be cognizant, that's one of your roles. We'll have back on for this next agenda, work session assignments for committee, well, a lot of them are now set with the mayor and Mayor Protem, but for the rest of you, where you fit in with those other committees, be thinking about what you wanna be willing to take on as, as we get into next week, and look to fill those out. And just with budget meeting schedules, we'll begin with a little bit of talk on budgets this next week. What you'll get presented, just to, just so you know, we've done a little bit of reductions before we present it to you. Within our general fund, I asked for, didn't have to use all a hundred thousand of the, of cuts that they, that they, that they submitted to me, but I used a portion of those to get to a balanced budget. Within our CIP items, we've reduced about a million dollars out of the, the five-year CIP from what we would have done in last year's CIP, and that's just really a reflection of reduced local option sales tax and reduced hotel motel money. So we've already asked them to make several significant reductions in, in the projects that they have, that doesn't mean that you won't wanna have some other alterations as we go through the process, but that's already, they've, it's, they've already had to go through that process of, of taking out things that last year were on the, on the board to be considered to be done. Your meeting schedules, we're gonna be meeting all our Mondays again, the extra Monday will, will use, the free Monday, and then we'll be using pretty much every Thursday as well after this week. Those Thursday ones are all at three-thirty, and the free Monday, I can't remember if that was a three-thirty or not, but you did have it on your schedule last week with what was provided, just make sure that you are ready to, as you can, to meet those, those timing. We'll have a lot of time invested into the budget. We try to keep it to about two hours a night. We may go a tad long depending on who's talking. I'm not the one who talks longest, am I?
That's usually beer that goes over time, so.
But no, we try to keep it down to about two hours, just 'cause it's hard to pay attention to a given topic much longer than that, so, that's all I had.
Okay, the only thing I wanted to, just remind everybody again, this is, this is budget time, so as we go into, to that part, I'm sure that everybody's gonna be in all of your ears, but the bottom line is, we don't work for one person, we work for the city, so looking forward to this. Again, happy new to you, everybody, and just remind everybody to be safe, it's really cold out there, so if there's nothing else, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, so moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote ourselves out.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Goodnight, everybody, thank you. What'd he say?
First party.
Yeah.